We can see you. Can you give us a quick sound check?
And Hugh, we can see you. Can you give us a quick sound check?
Sure. Good evening, Swati.
Thank you, Hugh.
Hello, can you hear me?
Dan Plasnick, you are here in behalf of the antenna case 206 to Mass Ave, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so then your item is the last one, so until then feel free to, you know, keep your camera and microphone off and, you know, just checking in between. I think it might be, you know, close to nine or later, we can expect.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Hello, this is Wally from the Sullivan Chamber. You guys are audible.
Hey, Wally. Good to hear from you again.
Glad to hear from you, too.
And thanks for hanging in there. We've got a lot of items on the agenda tonight. We'll see, we'll have to see how quickly it goes, but it'll be somewhat long. Hi, Ted. Can you do a sound check for us?
Hi, Jeff. I'm here.
Hey. So now's probably a good time for, for those of you who are new to the planning board, just to, to give you the, the tips and tricks. So we'll start the meeting promptly at 6:30. Right now, this is a practice session and at 6:30, we'll turn it into a broadcast. So people will be able to join the meeting and, and see and hear everything. So keep that in mind. Always say your name before you speak because otherwise it can be hard to tell who's speaking. In general, you'll be waiting to be recognized by the chair before you speak, but in, in all circumstances, make sure that you, you give your name so that we know who's speaking for the purpose of the transcript and try to speak clearly and in the direction of your microphone and, you know, keep the camera, keep your face sort of centered in, in your camera as much as possible. That makes it a lot easier for people to, to see and hear what you're, to see you and to hear what you're saying. Are there any questions from anybody?
Hey, Jeff, it's Kathy. I just need you to enable my record.
I just did that.
Oh, okay.
Kathy?
Sure. Perfect. Thanks, Swati.
Sure.
Nice to see you. Like always.
Are you chairing tonight, Mary?
I am.
Oh, great.
Lucky me, huh?
I am glad I was here tonight, then.
There we go. We'll move it right along, right?
Right. Let's see how quick and efficient we can be.
Yes.
Break all records.
Break all records and then we can tell Catherine, you gotta start moving it along.
There you go.
Excuse me, Swati, could I ask you, do you, do you know if you intend to do the BZA cases after the two public hearings? Is that the schedule?
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. So you can take a break, keep, you know, leave the camera and microphone off.
Yeah, I don't think anyone wants to see me eat dinner. Thank you. I will, I will do just that.
Thank you, Jim.
Enjoy your dinner.
Thank you.
Enjoy.
It's a nice living room, though, Jim.
I used a very talented local architect and we've been very happy with him.
Glad to hear.
Yeah.
We are waiting for Tom.
Lou, I think.
And Lou.
All right.
All right, I'll share the screen. Okay, Tom has joined. Tom, can you give us a quick sound check? We can see you.
I can see you and I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you, Tom.
Get connected to the meeting and after two or three minutes, Mary will, will begin the, the meeting. Everything okay, Mary?
Good evening. Welcome to the July 13th, 2021, meeting of the Cambridge Planning Board. My name is 20 of the Acts of 2021, signed into law on June 16th, 2021. All board members, applicants and members of public instructions for public comment at that time, and you can also find instructions on the city's webpage for remote planning board meetings. This is Mia Spibbridge. There will also be a transcript of the proceedings. I'll start by asking staff to take board member attendance and merit all.
Kind of in transit, but just I'll start out with attendance. So Louis Bachi, are you present and is the meeting audible to you? Meeting audible to you?
Present and audible.
Thank you, Ted. Stephen Cohen, are you present and is the meeting audible to you?
Present and audible.
You. Tom Sedavich, are you present and is the meeting audible to you?
Present and audible. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, Tom. Catherine?
I am present and the meeting is audible.
Thank you, Mary. So that is five planning board members currently present.
Okay.
Excuse me, I just got a call from Louis. He's looking for the email, so I have forwarded him the email. If you can, you know.
We should probably just start with the update then and wait for Lou before we begin the hearings. So anyway, the first item is an update from community development.
Thank you, your Iran Farouk, Assistant City Manager for Community Development. I will do today's update. Here is Jeff Roberts, Director of Zoning and Development, and he is joined by Swati Joseph, Daniel Meskley, meeting today. So that, I believe, is it for city staff. For, for the bulk of the meeting, we, the meeting today, there are two hearings on the agenda. One is at 7 Cornelius Way, which is an amendment to the special permit, a number of general business items. These are a couple of BZA cases at 197 Vassal Lane and 150 Cambridge Long, but it will be interesting. The next board meeting is going to be July 20th, which, which is a continued special permit hearing for 95 First Street. We are holding July 27th for a meeting, but it's board will be August 3rd, which will include two public hearings again for 600 Mass Ave and 698 Mass Ave. Monday night council meetings are on recess until the summer meeting, which is August 2nd, but the council is continuing to, to work through the 14th, which is Wednesday. There is a hearing in the morning at the Transportation and Public Utilities Committee. The council includes parking ratio discussion on parking maximums and minimums in zoning. On the 21st, the ordinance committee will hold their hearing on the zoning changes to Article 22 that the board discussed.
Thank you very much, Iran. Let's see, has Lou joined?
Hasn't appeared yet, so we might need to wait another moment.
Yep. All right, that's what we will do then.
Dates, we can use the time to provide them.
BZA case to just move it along, get it out of the way, because, you know, we don't need...
I agree.
I agree. This is Tom.
Okay. Okay, let's do that then.
This is 2062 Mass Ave. And the representative, I believe, oh, it doesn't, it doesn't say in my notes. Is there a representative here from the 2062 Mass Ave? Could you, could you say your name if you're here?
Yes, good evening. Just to clarify.
Why don't you introduce the, the case and note that this is, this is a general business case, which can be taken out of order.
Okay, very good. All right. And we can't take it out of order. This is BZA case 125 782, which is a proposed, the BZA has asked that the planning board review all telecommunications antenna cases. CDD staff will provide some information about this.
The BZA has asked that the, the planning board review these. These are cases that require a special permit from the BZA for, for, normally we have our urban design team look at these cases. So I'm, I, I know we're maybe putting her on the spot, but Susannah Biglin is here.
Jeff, um, so this antenna case is located at the Henderson Carriage Building and it's an existing wireless installation. So it is quite a good installation. So everything's located on the rooftop and the antennas are well set back from principal building for guards. Did suggest us utilizing the smallest mounting brackets possible and making sure that all visually exposed equipment has that same dull gray appearance. We all sized as the existing antennas, but the applicant has advised that that isn't a feasible option. And that's fine. That was like a sort of fine. That's my feedback.
All right. Thank you, Susannah and Jeff. So we do have a reference, the comments that Suzanne had just made. So do any board members have questions for either the staff or the applicants? I don't see any questions. Then shall we move into discussion? What are board members' feelings on?
The color of the penthouse, the structure makes good sense to me. The color of the penthouse, the structure makes good sense to me.
Okay, thank you. Then are we prepared to? What? Go ahead.
Hugh and I have our hands raised.
Oh, I'm sorry. I completely missed that. Didn't see it. Okay.
To the recommendations, to the BZA.
All right, and Ted, you had?
Well, I have no objection to the roof of that building, that I really wish there were some sort of screen around all the equipment. It really spectacular building, but it's a shame that the roof is not more encheating with the rest of the building.
So much of that equipment from such a distance. I think unfortunately, the proponent is not the owner of the building, so there's not much we can do.
I understand.
Toward, let's see, I think Hugh, you would put it in the form of a motion, right, to pass on the comments from staff. Okay, so Hugh has made a motion. Do we have a second?
Um, second.
Thank you, Tom.
Steve Cohen?
Yes.
Hugh Russell?
Yes.
Tom Sinevich?
Yes.
Mary, Louis Bachi, I believe, has joined us. Louis Bachi, can you confirm, are you present and is the meeting audible to you?
Present and audible.
All right, so we're going to then move on with the first scheduled public hearing, which is on case, you're welcome, thank you, Dan, by a townhouse unit at Seven Cornelius Way. And CDD staff will begin by summarizing why this is before us.
Thanks, Mary. This is Jeff Roberts. Overall townhouse development back in 1982, and the owner of this particular unit is proposing to make conforming additions and alterations coming after, or has granted two similar amendments to this special permit in the past two years. So there's a memo from CDD that has the criteria for approval townhouse, and so I think it's important to get the applicant's affirmative assent that they are willing to proceed with six members.
Applicant, Mr. Keeler, as Jeff just noticed, there noted, 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 rather, there are only six planning board members present. Thank you. Okay, you'll have up to 30 minutes for your presentation, though we hope it can be as concise as possible. So.
My name is Kevin Keeler. I'm Chief Designer for Brady Built Sun Rooms. Here this evening, representing Jason and Amanda Stockman of Seven Cornelius Way. They are working from home now, and they also are being blessed with a new baby on the way. And so they are in desperate Raskar, two James Way, which is approved by the board as well. It's an amendment to a special permit that in comes rear of the house. Dimensions to be 16.3 by 14 feet. The single story first floor, current fence will not be altered. The third floor shed dormer will also be added to the rear of the townhouse. The four guys we're doing for the Raskars as well, we stepped it down from the ridge, just the same as we did theirs, so it's slightly below the ridge where it attaches. Within the zoning requirements, the number of parking spaces will not be altered or changed for this project, and no trees will be cut down to complete the project. The house, so it will look exactly the same as the house when it is finished. We had a community meeting. We also included in your package two letters that we received of support on the project as well, one from 15 Cornelius Way and one from Five Cornelius Way. And we would respectfully request that you grant the same amendment to the special permit as before, so we could proceed forward with the project.
Okay, thank you. So this is a public hearing. So we will move to public comment now and then follow that up with questions and board discussion. But right now, any members of the public who wish to speak should now click the button that says raise hand at the bottom of your screen. If you are calling, additional written communications received after 5:00 PM yesterday will be entered into the record. So let's definitely ask you to just double check, be sure that I'm not missing anything.
Sure, thanks. This is Jeff Roberts, and I'll just, because we don't have any hand Zoom on a computer, there should be a button that says raise hand. If you'd like to speak on this case, Seven Cornelius Way, you should push the button that says raise hand. Just giving a little bit of time to see if people need to find that.
We'll confirm that we can hear you. You have up to three minutes to speak before you need to wrap up. Okay, so if for some reason we decide to move this to a second public hearing on this application from the staff of the Community Development Department, they are available to answer questions as well as the applicant. So this is our project.
This is Steve. We've more or less approved a similar.
Or to a decision if we need to. I think that we don't have to have a second hearing on it.
Yeah, just a quick question. More of a curiosity to the proponent, actually the builder. Did the last one of these use helical piles for a foundation? I found it curious. I didn't notice it in the last.
Yes, yes, we did.
Package, and I think it's a great idea. I just didn't see it the last time. I noticed it this time.
Okay, Lou, did you have anything else?
Oh, that was it. I was curious about the helical piles. You don't usually see them in residential work.
Their memo was relatively straightforward. There wasn't no that the dimensional form should be revised in perspective. There was just a comment on continuing review of a meeting to revise the existing and proposed plot actions. Are we ready to make a motion to support this permit request?
On that motion, Lou Bachi?
Yes.
Ted Cohen?
Yes.
Steve Cohen?
Yes.
Hugh Russell?
You're absolutely correct. All right, let me go back to that. This is what happens when you have big gaps between when you chair the meetings. Okay. The board needs to find that the key features of the natural landscape are preserved. New buildings relate sensitively to safe and convenient intrusion of onsite parking is minimized and services such as trash collection in utility boxes are can get, I think we can make those findings. And then the others is the general special permit criteria, which the board members are all familiar with.
Louis, second.
All right, so I'm hearing no objections. So, all right, so then let us go back to.
To restate their votes on that same motion. So this was made by Steve Cohen and seconded by Lou Bachi. So on that, Steve Cohen?
Yes.
Hugh Russell?
Yes.
Tom Sinevich?
Yes.
Mary Flynn?
Yes.
Have a pleasant evening.
Thank you. Thank you for your time and the presentation. Okay, so we will. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing on planning board case 380, an application by Jonathan Miller for special permits.
Thank you, Mary. This is Jeff Roberts again. So this happens to be another proposal for the alteration of a townhouse structure. The circumstances will affect the nonconforming height setbacks and open space characteristics of the lot. And because this is in the central square overlay district permits. Now, we did point this out in the memo due to a stairhead house access to the roof. The existing height of the building is just overlay district zoning doesn't allow the planning board to approve heights above 45 feet by special permit. So section of the board could grant the necessary relief under state law, under state statute. And unfortunately, we at CDD can't advise the planning board, not the solicitor, as to whether that would be an appropriate action for the planning board to take. Aside from that question, the memo is subject to the Central Square Advisory Committee, which also submitted a report. So that's all for the intro.
Okay. And as with the previous hearing, Mr. Miller, I have to ask you or remind you that there are only six planning board members present and an affirmative vote we do. Okay, thank you so much. You will have up to 30 minutes for your presentation, so please be as concise as possible. And if you would please reduce.
I am an architect with Frank Shirley Architects, who is working on this project for the homeowners. The homeowners are here with me tonight and will for comment that we acknowledge the CDD staff's interpretation of the for special in the letter submitted. What I would like to do, however, is move you through the all the aspects of our proposed project, starting with, so we can start with our site plan here. You can see 48 Pearl Street located in blue. It's on the corner of away here. Oh, there we go. So I believe this is our base districts. Yes, so you can see again in blue, lowest location on the edge of the central square overlay district. Again, in blue, thank you. Oh, you can move on. Thanks. So there's some, the photo on your left is on Pearl Street, and that is the front of the structure. And then the next three photos are showing the views along Franklin Street. You can also see the site here. Of note, in this existing plan is the small connector, connector in order to get a code compliance stair to the basement garage and the first floor of the row house. Can move on to the next. The area highlighted in blue is the requested expansion of the connector. And again, this will allow us to get a building code complish, which does not currently exist interior. In order to do this, we're requesting special permits per 20.304 point four takes place within that zone. We're also requesting a special permit for a reduction in open space, and this is per section 20.34 open space for the lot. That is all the area in green. That area in green is permeable open space. The reduction in open space is very minimal, actually. We're only going to, this would only reduce it by squish an existing deck on the second floor, and therefore that a lot of that area in the open patio is already not counted towards open space. This is the existing roof deck. What you can see here is there is a very small spiral stair access to the roof deck. It's only head height for a door or a stair to get onto the roof deck. So those are both things we want to change. Sure, is highlighted in blue again, and just for clarity, set against the existing footprint of the current head house, which is the have an expanded GFA, however, because the altered roof deck is slightly smaller due to the configuration. So this is the west elevation. On this elevation, you can see primarily just the head house. You can see we are proposing to 45 feet. And that is because we're kind of double smashed on that, if you will. If we were in a C2A based, we would be allowed to have a height of 55 feet with an option to go up to 80 feet. However, because we're in both of those districts, we are hoping to increase that slightly. If you go to the next slide, please. So you can see here the south view along Franklin Street to your right a bit and down towards the bottom. You can see particularly at the head house here that the door access to the roof. And here you can see again the south elevation as proposed. You can see, again, it's 1.1 feet taller and has a code compliant door, and the stair also meets all the code, building code dimensional requirements, sure, as well as the head house up above. Next slide, please. This is a line of sight study that we did. Next slide, please. And then the same study from Pearl Street, again, directly across the street, you cannot see the head house. Excellent. What see the head house, both existing and proposed? And you can see on the right there is the proposed volume. Next slide, please, is that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much for your presentation, the board and board discussion. So at this time, any members of the public who wish to speak should now click the button. The body board had received no written comments on this case. Additional written communications received after 5:00 PM yesterday will be entered into the record. All right, I am, I do see at least one hand, and perhaps there will be more. So I'll ask staff, I ask you to wrap up. And so Jeff, if I can turn it over to you, please.
Sure. So we have one hand raised, and if any, please begin by giving your name and address.
Thank you, Suzanne Blyer, Five Fuller Place. And to my eye, it looks like a really thoughtful work that is being proposed. Thanks.
Thank you. So that was the speaker. If there's anyone else who wishes to speak, I'll just say a last call for anyone to push the button that says raise hand. If you're connected by Zoom via computer, or if you're by phone, press star nine on your phone.
Sure, if, sorry, Jonathan Miller, might I add just one more comment before it moves into board comments?
Sure.
So thank you, Suzanne, for that. Homeowner spoke to, you know, several of the neighbors outside of the community meeting as well. Everyone expressed.
Yeah, thank you. Yes, we do have that report. It was sent in and they did, they did support the project. So we also have received a memo from on the application from staff and community development, and they are here to answer questions. So if board members have questions for either the applicant or for staff, please raise your hand and we'll begin there. Ted?
Well, a very brief question for the applicant before I get to staff. There's currently a fence between the house and.
This now will continue to remain, but if it does not, a similarly located and sized fence will be placed in the same location.
And whether we have the power to grant the application for the height over 45. And I note that there are representatives from ISD and from the law department here, and I wonder if they were. Not only we would like the information, but I would think ISD would also like the information. And a general opinion, I guess, question for staff is, should we simply, should we continue the hearing and take, but then does that mean the applicant would have to reapply?
So thanks. I'll take this as a Jeff to make that for the planning board. If you wanted to get an answer to that question, to vote, to request an opinion from the city solicitor to continue the case in order to get that response back and then, and then take action on the case. That would be the preferred approach. And if, you know, certainly at this meeting, if board members had other comments.
Ted, did you have any further thoughts on that at this point, George? Shall I move on to other board members? Just like to hear from other board members on, do you have comments on the permits that we know we can grant? And do you have any thoughts on permits we can, and the applicant could go to the BZA, I believe, on the height issue? Tom?
A fact to minimize, but I think we're tied, tied by and constrained by the regulations. I, you know, they're making an unsaid, and I guess that's certainly the argument that you would make at the BZA, I guess, leading the witness here in terms of forming an argument around hardship, but it's frustrating. I understand the letter of the law, and it needs to be adhered to. So that's where I am. I'm. So that's where I am. I'm more than willing to, to vote the, the special permits on all the other areas.
Agree with the others. I, I, on the technical issue of, I would be inclined to approve it to you tonight. At any point in the process down the line will be done. So I would go forward.
Authority granted and just wait to see if anybody appeals within the timeframe. And if not, then they have their permit.
Yeah, that, that would might be my approach. And I, as a practical matter, based on what I've seen and heard, I don't think anybody is going to appeal. I don't think anybody is going to object. And it's just as a, as a matter of efficiency. I, I, I think we can go forward and should go forward.
Seems like it would put the owner and the architect here in jeopardy if we made this other call. I don't know if that's really where they want to be. Would this be a simple coming?
So perhaps the opinion would come back and say that we had the ability to do it. In which case we could then, you know, vote on it and proceed. The question is how is it potential delay? And if they come back and say that we don't have the authority and that the applicant has to go to the BZA, then they're even further delayed. So say Hugh.
Exactly.
Yeah. Hugh, what are your thoughts? I think you muted.
If we could, if we can manage to get this all resolved a month from now, proposing that we assume that we have the right to grant the height based on the presentation of the applicant. Do so, and then if the law department agrees or the building department agrees, we'll just go forward and that'll be it. So.
That's what I was proposing, yes.
I mean, I think in, I would like to know proposal. And that could be part of what we send to the city solicitor. If we busy, we have no problem going forward. It's just this technicality. Wanted.
Yeah, that's a thought. Yeah, I mean, it is, it is bad that it's to get hung up, but nonetheless, there is law. So Ted, what are your thoughts? You have your hands up again.
Yeah. Yeah. Not wait to delay the proponent any more than is necessary. And part of me will once is written. I suppose I would be willing to, to vote to grant it and make the appropriate funds. And I don't want to opine on it, but I think we would have to make a different set of findings with regard to. You know, so it, it, it is unfortunate and it is puts us in an awkward position. I, I, I guess, you know.
This is Jeff. I would note that the, you know, the, like I said, we've, we've made the cities.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I would agree with Jeff that I was not aware of this issue coming up tonight.
I, I would suggest that then a sort of conditional response that we approve it as we approve the other elements of the application. And we recommend to, to the planning board approval. The attorneys can, can make their determination and based on their determination, it will.
Yeah, I, I guess I'm a little concerned about. You know, if we, you, you do that, say with staff to make the change to the permit findings to, and then file the document without coming back, as Ted said, there might be other find right way. So let me ask the applicant. You know, it's, I, I can't tell you what the timeframe is for, and which means that we would continue this. Or this hearing, or we could approve the elements that we can approve. You have thoughts as to, I know you feel like we can do it, but clearly we, we're not comfortable moving forward on that basis. So listen to those.
Yeah. So I'll actually just let the homeowner speak because they're here and it is their home.
Yeah.
Then we want to do this too.
Yes. And Jeff also then, okay, Lou.
Maybe I'm thinking differently about this, but seems like the hang up will be at the building department. That said, that we did indeed have the ability to make this finding. Wouldn't that pretty much end it right there now? That seems.
Ted had also mentioned that perhaps the findings would have to be different. In which case than the document that we had prepared, when necessarily.
But, but if we don't have authority to approve findings per se, if what we're doing is making a recommendation to the planning board, to the.
From making findings that we, that we have the authority pending the law department's approval. But anyway, let me go to Jeff since he's the zoning area.
I'll just reiterate, you know, for the sake of efficiency, since we're talking about this a lot. And we could certainly spend a long time thinking of different creative solutions. I think that anything had opinion so that can move, we can move as quickly as possible to try to get that to the planning board so that you can take action with legal advice or to only act on the special permits that are, that are explicitly within the, the planning board's purview under the central square overlay district, which would essentially mean like, like any other case that also needs planning board approval. The special permit would be granted, but then it would be conditioned on getting the relief required from the BZA. So this is necessarily a good thing for the board or for the applicant, because that, that could, you know, tie, tie things up in a way that we can't really predict. So that, that would be my suggestion.
You're mute. You're on mute again.
Connected to the change to the access between the garage. And apparently tonight we could get a decision out. They presented plans to the building department that cross that. And they could simultaneously pursue these owning variants, which would take another at all.
Right. Yeah.
Take the uncertainty of the timing and schedule of autumn by tomorrow to the BZA. And that might be quicker than the alternative process that we're trying to beat all the rest of the work. So just get started. And if you don't definitely, then you've got a slightly defective headhouse.
Jeff had said that it would be good if you have a legal question about how to proceed, that you make a root suffix.
Okay, no worries. Yeah. I mean, I think there's, there's a benefit to us getting that the opinion anyway, just in case by some random comments. Steve. And Lou.
Yeah, I didn't actually have it up, but I do, I do have a comment. So if he doesn't, you know, have to go to the Board of Appeals, then we haven't approved that approval, that we approve it. But if the law department says that it has to go to the Board of Appeals, then it goes to the Board of Appeals. At least that way they don't have to come back to us, no matter what the, the, for that last part.
Right. Right. Well, if they had to, it would be relatively quick though. I mean, it's, you know, it's a procedural matter and it's not going to require a lot of additional comment. But what is, what are your thoughts?
My question was more to the proponent.
I'm sorry, was that directed towards us?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, I mean, Lauren and Eric can add on. We might be requiring further review by the law department and or your, yourselves or the BZA can grant. Lauren, Eric, would you like to add anything?
Sure. And I, I just want to start by saying thank you, everybody for taking, giving this so much consideration. You guys have bought your time and your thoughtfulness about it. Jonathan is absolutely correct, like, and I think a lot of you have brought up this point as well, that, you know, we can get the bit level work, which would be the earliest work in the project, of course, and many things hinge on that. So certainly if you don't feel prepared or enabled tonight to vote on post so that we can move forward. And then, and if, and if you're feeling that you need to present the question to the law department to know whether or not you have the department to your satisfaction. And I just want to point one thing out about that subject and the law of, and the involvement of the law department. I understand and related specifically to the Supreme Judicial Court's Balalta decision. The planning board, I think back in April of this year, question was this question about detached versus attached housing and what was covered by the Balalta decision. A recommendation was passed on by this decision by the SJC, but with questions being sent to the law department on this exact question. And that recommendation was, that was the end of the trail for my research on that subject. And whether or not the law department actually ever rendered a opinion or decision about that question in April. That was probably actually prior to April.
All right. Thank you for that. That's, that's helpful. Jeff, let me ask you this. Can we at the height issue? Can we continue the hearing just specifically for that issue?
For the planning board to make a decision on a case and then have it come back for more decision. So I think either it's an, an open space, which would, you know, which would cover the, the lower levels of the building, but not the headhouse. And we're central square overlay district. And that, that section says that in this, in this zoning district, heights shall not exceed 45 feet. So the planning board, you know, the, the applicant would, would need to sort of decide what to do from there, which could be seeking a, a variance from the Board of Zoning Appeal or trying to, you know, figure out.
Can I ask a question about that?
Well, I don't want to get into a big line back and forth about what's the right way to go.
But if it's. By law, Article eight dealing with prior, prior existing non-conforming structures.
Doubt in this. So this, this, it would require a read advertisement of the application. So with the, the public hearing was advertised with the special permits that were being sought. It's, but then we would need to read advertise that for the public hearing.
All right, Ted, and this will be the, hopefully the final comment, then we'll just.
Negative action on the height issue. Is that viewed as negative action, which is going to? I don't know if it's right in front of me, is going to is, is opposed to reapplications of the same thing. Rather, for an opinion, and then I think you'd have a clean approval of the other issues. Get by for a special permit or instead not wait and just go to the BZA. Am I being clear?
Yeah, looking, I would be concerned about that because, you know, unfavorable that, that would constitute unfavorable action on part of petition and it could, it could affect what they need to apply for. I think in this case, what, what we've been talking about is that the relief that they would be seeking would be different than what they've actually applied for in this case. So again, this is a legal question. So it would be, if the board doesn't, if the board's uncertain about that before proceeding, the best course of action would be to seek an opinion from the law department before doing anything that might be difficult to undo.
If, if the board has concluded that we don't, that we have no objection to the proposed change.
All right. So let me see if I understand the not take any action on the height issue other than, you know, stating that we but we need an opinion from the law department as to what is the, which is the appropriate granting authority, whether it be the planning board or the board.
What I said again, I tried to be really clear. So yeah, so this is Jeff again, sorry. So the, the point that Ted raised is a, I, I think is a relevant board can, you know, take action on under the application. If, if the board were to then not take favorable action on the height that, 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 then you should, should ask.
All right. So then it seems like we're back to where we were at the beginning, which Jeff had summarized beautifully, which we wait on everything until we get a legal opinion from the law department.
No, I wouldn't wait on everything. I would approve what we can approve. That we have no objection.
Right. But that still doesn't give approval. We're just going to keep going around in circles. Anyway, Hugh.
Basically want to speak in support of what Steve just said. Can give you and going to the zoning board for something that seems inconceivable, they would deny. How long they're going to take, what those considerations are, what other action might be required. And my ultimate response might be try to to fix our, our law. I mean, it would be nice if it was fixed. I think we should ask this question. But I really think they would be smart to just do it, go to the zoning board.
All right. Thank you. And then.
Negative action, correct? That's, that, that would be my only concern now, I guess.
Well, we're, we're not saying.
Risk that Ted, Ted pointed it out, and it could definitely be a risk that it could be seen as adverse action on, on the application or.
But it's not adverse action for the zoning board because we've included in our decision.
Behalf that it not be viewed as a repetitive petition. So I, I think, you know, using Jeff's language, that if we, if we say we don't have, we do to get around the repetitive petition issue. But I think Hugh was correct. It's probably faster for them to just get the special. I suspect that would be faster all around than waiting for the decision and then coming back here.
Yeah.
Okay. So, so that's the conservative approach.
Can I add that language?
That's fine.
Don't have any problem with that.
Okay. So are we in agreements then that? And I'll read the findings on those and that will say, you know, based on then, you know, we, we don't think we, well, I'm not sure. Again, I'm sorry. I'm not a lawyer. So.
Conservative approach to this rather complicated issue. It would be to seek an opinion from the law department. I think that my, they, the applicant would have to figure out where to go from there. And, and I don't, I don't have a very clear, specific answer about where I've, I've heard some. Would lead where the board might expect it to lead. So that's, that's the, that's the caveat that I'm putting.
Here consensus that we don't have authority to approve it. You know, so we don't approve it, and we should state that we're not approving it because we don't believe have.
Can we say, but if we did have the authority, we would approve it.
Exactly. Yes.
If we just went for the opinion and we continued this, how, well, we don't know how long it would depend. Assume that that then means we have voted negatively on the other issue, the height issue, other than we will say one positive thing BZA and get turned down. Then they wouldn't be able to come back to us.
They, they won't be turned down.
No, I know that. I understand that. But I'm just saying, you know, in, you know, if the world suddenly. Is that right, Jeff?
I mean, I can work in grant or deny. We've discussed that the, one of the special permits they're seeking, if you look at the zoning, it's not something that the planning board can grant. The way to say that is deny the special permit that is that, that is otherwise being sought. And then the applicant would have to figure out where to go there.
Term denied.
Well, I think we can put in that we feel we don't have jurisdiction and then if somebody wants to argue.
Right. Well, I hope so. What I would just offer is that if you did request a legal opinion from the law department and continued the matter for, say, 30, 45 years.
That's very helpful. All right. Now. let's then like go back to the, to the applicants. Is that, you might be, that you have to go back to the, the Board of Zoning Appeal? Or we can vote what we can tonight and the decision you prefer. So I think.
May I be, may I be recognized, Lauren?
Yes. Yeah.
I would kick myself if I didn't ask, but given that each, each, continue the one for the legal.
No, no, I've already tried that route here tonight and was told, no, yes, they come as a bundle. They come as a bundle.
Okay. We are, we are open to continuation for a reasonable period of time for, for obtaining a, a opinion or further information from the law.
So that's the easiest course for us.
Okay. All right, Hugh, did you have another thought? I see.
You could have done that half an hour ago.
I know, I know, I know. Well, you know, the good news is we kept kind of hashed through a lot of this and, you know, we won't have to when it comes back. And to request an opinion from the law department as to whether the planning board had, all right. Any other final questions from the planning board changes to that motion?
So, you know, if they determine that we don't have the authority and they need a variance, that means, you know, in this approach, they have to come back to us, you know, to approve that, that we have authority to do, and they have to go to the Board of Appeals for, for the variance. It's, you know, if that's what they want, it's fine, but it's, it's, it's.
It's very bureaucratic, but it is what it is. And I think it's the safest, safe hearing none. Can I have someone make that motion then? And again, okay. Let's see, Hugh?
The law department this week.
Yeah.
It has to be advertised because we can't continue it with a date certain. So it's in another several weeks. I mean, this is adding three months. And it's, yes, because there are all these different pieces. I just want to make sure the applicant understands that we're not going to, they can't get a go ahead thirty to forty five days from now. It's going to be.
Yeah, it's like.
The answer is, under this scenario, we can't move quickly.
Announce a date that wouldn't, it wouldn't require re-advertising, but the, the one thing that I would caution about that is that, yeah, court wants to hedge by, I can, you know, ask Swathi to see what, what looks like it's, you know, thirty to forty five days in the future date.
Yes, you know, it should, it should take, it should take the attorneys ten minutes, you know, take a look at this and resolve it and just tell us next week.
All right. We know, yeah. All right. Between thirty and forty five maybe. And, and just set it for that and we will, you know, hopefully the law.
So we do have dates available from August twenty fourth onward. Even if, if legal department makes a positive recommendation that, you know, the planning board has the authority, is it a special, can continue it to August seventeenth? And if we'll have to then continue it from August seventeenth as well.
Crazy.
I think, I think that's the advisable course of action in, in terms of pick up then without re-advertising. Then the board can pick it up then. If it has to be re-advertized, it has to be re-advertized. And in that case, the board would be able to, you know, make a decision.
It'll take them ten minutes to do so. You know, we take a look at it next week. We just continue it until next week. We don't have to go through a whole process.
Well, I understand what you're saying. And I understand the frustration. I'm sure that everybody else feels it too, but we don't have control over that, Steve.
Can do so.
All right.
What about the decision for next week?
All right. Ted.
I was, I was just going to say, Steve, having been a town council for thirty years, that, you know, they're not going to respond in ten days.
Yeah.
In a week. It's just not going to happen. You know, they've got a whole other, this, the, the, the Solicitor's Office will say, we have the authority to do it under the existing application or extension to advertise, to re-advertise. But I think.
I, 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 I hear you, but it's a sad commentary as far as.
Cover the time for the legal notice, you know, if we look at a further August date, so let's say if we're looking at August thirty first.
All right. So so you're saying if we hear from the law department that we do have the, the authority to do it, then you.
Expedited. There's still, we're trying to answer a lot of questions that we.
I know. We don't have the answer. All right. So what date are we extending it to them, please? I just need clarification. To continue this hearing until August seventeenth, with the understanding that the department will request hospital. Can I have a motion?
Please so moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Can I?
Steve Cohen?
Yes.
Hugh Russell? Uh, Hugh, you're muted. All six members voting in favor.
Okay. All right. To the app, thank you so much for bearing with us through all of this. It's.
For their consideration.
Yeah, you're welcome. All right. So that concludes the public hearings. We still have general business, eight sixteen. Why don't we all come back at like eight twenty early adjourned. Okay, it's eight twenty two. So if I can get the board members back, please. All right. We're just waiting for Hugh and Lou. What can I? Oh, all right. So with Mokam and did have to come over to your house. General business and we have two additional Board of Zoning Appeal cases to review. The first case is the thing for pre-kindergarten through eighth grade, eighth grade on the existing one ninety seven Vassal Lane school site and contiguous Father Kalanand.
Thank you, Mary. This is Jeff Robertson. There's, there's a team from the city staff and from consultants that'll be presenting the project, several of the school sites. It's providing updated facilities and accommodating new programs, which the city team will be able to talk about. Planning board to grant dimensional relief for school buildings. Most of these buildings are in residential zoning districts, so the zoning is more limiting. But the planning board couldn't grant the relief under that particular zoning that, that allows for a planning board to increase, couldn't get that relief from the planning board. The city is having this come to the BZA to grant all the necessary relief. And the city project team asked, they, they could give an overview of the application to the planning board. And as with all BZA cases, the planning board can choose and, and give the presentation.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you, members of the planning board. Good evening. We have reached an important mark. There's an important investment in public education and in the community. We're hoping to receive your positive feedback as we prepare to present, as Jeff mentioned, to, we were able to provide adequate space to educate our students, provide for a new DHSP preschool with four new classrooms, as well as several features to support the city's sustainable goals. The fields and parks will also be improved with the new soccer field, improved little league. And I hope the following presentation by your design team will help facilitate your appreciation and understanding of the project's goals. Thank you for your time. Senator VSD, Brendan Roy, who is the program manager. Brenna Charlton is the assistant project manager. I'll be focused on the call that are with Perkins Eastman. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, David. Members of the board and staff, I'm Dan Arons, principal with Perkins Eastman Architects. I'm joined by several members of our, our team, both Perkins Eastman, as well as landscape architect, traverse landscape architects and VHB transportation architects. Have an opportunity to answer questions. As David mentioned, it goes up to grade eight. It also has a preschool, a community after school. It is a use of water tank, which is designed to alleviate challenges for the neighborhood in terms of the project includes underground parking and soil remediation. And we'll, we'll touch on those as well. In terms of focus groups with city representatives over the course of about two years of the program, where some of the, the program for preschool initially anticipated was reduced as well. We have had fifteen community meetings and special meetings to get that feedback, responded to to these project site and have had about eighty five focus groups over the last two years. We are about the existing and the proposed. So the, the project site is on between Vassal and can have the site. We, we think about a lot in terms of having that influence the design. What I will point out is a mining site as well as brick manufacturing. That left but also has the challenge of soils and groundwater that needs to be remediated. Existing site of the building would be the playground and the armory site. So it requires some technical solutions to address that. The particular challenges that Jeff was, was mentioning in terms of being able to get our approvals. Playground. So the proposed school building on the next slide is largely in the same place. Nineteen seventy one and nineteen seventy two came before this zoning. So the zoning was basically, height is, is non-conforming to design. I'll get to that in a minute. So the building is on Res B, open space and maintaining the, the Kalanand playground, creating a softball field and a brand new school classrooms and support spaces close to Vassal Lane with community shared spaces in board and, and north of that. So away from Kalanand Playground. Try to keep it away from the neighbors. And where the blue arrow is provide vehicular access is we are pulling the, the building in to this footprint and trying to squeeze it to leave as much playground as we can, a bit and down a bit. Up for school program and down for. And the next slide C of the site and that configuration is a direct result from those conversations that we've had over the last couple of years. And input, couple of other elements of the site. One, where the Kalanand Playground is, we also have constitutional Article ninety slightly increased with modified boundaries to, to that open space. And that is in process. To the left, not just of today, but going forward to twenty seventeen. Now we can go to the next slide. This is the, the posts are growing and the city needs to legally have enough program space for the students. They also need to recognize the ability to improve bicycle and pedestrian vehicles of envision twenty twenty. Something that is meant to connect basically from the north, Danahy Park. We have so urban friend. It, we've been studying the window wall ratio and the transparency performance building. And this, this building is a net zero emissions building. We have goals to have, having, you know, a building that is a good neighbor and meets the, the guidelines of Cambridge. Has some maintenance needs, but very difficult to remediate in the, in the concrete. So there, there's some serious issues on the outside to deal with and on the inside as well. We talked about the overall design, but subpar, the surfaces are in need of repair. And that doesn't even go to the, the best Vassal Lane from the south then of the existing on the left and the new on the right. You can see that it's being opened up in terms of has a nice neighborhood scale. To the north, from the north, from the Father Kalanand Place beyond is some landscape, the traverse's design is really terrific. As well as art installations that we're looking at as signage. And as I mentioned, we're at Design Development, so we're still defining some of this, but we have the entrance to the crease, the entrance at the bus and a courtyard. And actually, Swathi, if you don't mind going back to, I think we may have skipped a, skipped moments, the Tobin School and the Vassal Lane Upper School. So one thing that the neighbors will note, and as we all approach this location that enhances the neighborhood and allows the, the schools to spill out. Now we can go past the, into the middle of the school where the heart of school on the next slide is scaled, you know, after school weekend use to the community and really creates the center of this project. of this project. And zero net emissions building, no fossil fuels are burned on site, should be the lowest energy use of any of the buildings, water, but mostly it's an educational building where these sustainable features not only reflect the, the goals and ambitions. Speaking of the BZA on Thursday night, the relief that we will be discussing with them is shown on the, with the community process, especially around open space and I think by way of the 100, the floor area ratio and the height are issues that come out of, comes as a challenge because of the smaller, taller building. Sinage is not usual, so we need to make sure that people can find their way and don't get lost. And then finally, vehicular aisle widths, where in the parking, we have one, in, in a certain area, we have one-way angled parking. And we believe that the zoning is looking at perpendicular parking. And then finally tandem parking where the staff can park in other cars. And that's something that's been done at the previous two school sites. So that is, is a romp through the project. We're, we're happy to answer questions. I don't know, David, if you want to.
I think I'll just step in for a few minutes to speak to the staff review of the Tobin Montessori and Vassal Lane Upper School project for the typical project that comes before the board. And we've been part of the process from the very beginning, even as early as programmatic districts, which are going to, to have programs and homes on the, on the, on the site. We've had a lot of participation, our climate and sustainability staff, transportation planning, community planning, staff who are responsible for stewarding the implementation in the presentation. The project has gone also through extensive community process and some of the key design moves, comments and concerns that the team has heard from, from neighbors, as well as from parents and, and students. So seeing parking, which is currently on surface parking and moving it below grade has been one of the big moves that's allowed some, some of them exists on site right now. And then because it's a larger building, we've had a lot of focus in the design review on, but also surface treatment and, and materiality and that expression of the, the various surface treatments. There's been a lot, and not surprisingly, this was a key priority also of the, the neighbors. We've worked a lot with the team on making, speak a lot about the landscaping, but really the landscaping too, really tries to create a variety of experiences, especially as you're walking into, into the, to the building itself, but also into the site. Because one of the key things, and I, and if you think back to the slide with the connections, the broader community, both at Kalanand Playground, but also what, what is being created new in this plan and, and is a reflection of some sites to create missing connection that, that was really felt to be important. So our transportation stuff, show modes, and also then of course through the site, the, the public passage on sustainable modes, be they focus from a climate and sustainability perspective. As you know, the, we are now, since last year, 2020, Temple stepped forward even before that. And our last two schools have, have really targeted net zero, but now we're in a realm where, where really there's architects. And the, what is also, I think really great something line strategies. So if you think back to the design, there's a lot less glass than we sometimes see in buildings, but it's all very strategic where you don't want, you know, a lot of heat. So I, I think Dan mentioned something that the board has thought over our project. So, so we've stepped into that realm. I think that we thought that was really exciting. And then again, on the sustainability side, a critical element to being able to manage our future climate change impacts that we know are coming and to manage stormwater towards consideration. And on behalf of the, the city manager, also look, look for your positive.
Let you know that these are the relief elements that we're, we're going to be requesting. However, as to do of the construction documents, the solar energy roof area and signage really need to come at the, you know, at that last phase. And we, so we're going to withdraw those two elements and, and proceed with the others. So I just wanted to, even though that's not.
So board members, I don't know how many of you have seen this project before or aware of it. I've got board members. Let's see if I can find everybody. Do any of you have?
When will it be done?
I think it's like three or four years out, but the project team could answer that better than me. Okay. I'm just curious, what's the, the, the height there is from space? I'm just curious what the maximum height is.
You're right that, that it is mostly in the back. It is also in the southwest. So Vassal Lane closest to conforming, closest to the Alpine Street side. It goes up to about 56 feet. And we're looking for 56, which is slightly more than the minimum. The open space again is, and those, those roof heights range from 43 feet up to a smallish fly loft at 70 feet.
Yeah, thank you. I'm just curious in terms of, you were talking about, you know, there were changes in location and changes in the program. We hit Vassal Lane site.
So on the Vassal Lane to Concord Ave site.
Okay, within that.
We, we went through dozens of iterations. And, and so the, the change was pulling that back as much to the existing footprint.
Thank you. Tom, is it, you have some questions?
Yes. My question is actually start with sort of jurisdictional question. Is a city building exempt from design review, given the scale of this project? You know, you would expect a project at the scale that goes through Planning Board, a design review, special permit. So where are we on that? Why, why wouldn't we be going through that normal process on a, a building like this?
So I, this is, yeah, this is Jeff. I, I kind of gave an intro to that, but I can give a little bit detail under Article 19, being in that district. But as I pointed out at the beginning, some of the previous school development projects have come to the Planning Board that they're seeking for this case. But it, it just happened that when we crunched the numbers and, and looked at what they're doing on this particularly zoning approvals.
Oh, I, I understand that. But you know, there's, there's design review and urban design criteria that we would subject a project like this to and, you know, examine tree canopy and curb cuts and elevations and design. And, but you're saying because it's in an open space zone, that's we have, we're not going to go through that.
That's correct. So it's, it's going to, for zoning relief, it's going to the BZA. It's not, because the Planning Board can't grant the permits that are, that are needed in this case. And it's not subject to project review under Article 19. Strict project review is, is not applicable.
Okay. So I have mentioned.
Just following up on Tom's question, however, isn't that the purpose of section 4.5, Planning Board reviewing things and issuing a report, which you're asking the BZA to seeking that variance, other than the statement, well, it's already been through so many levels of neighborhood review to know the stormwater storage tank? And be curious to know what considerations went into that particular location and why other locations, which may have had the benefit of, of saving some existing trees are not being used. And then another question is, what happens in the event the legislature does not?
Okay. And Ron, do you want to answer some of those?
Thank you, Chair. I think I'm going to, the first question, Ted, it really was, as the team sat down to think through what are the, what are the possible at, at one board? And since we knew that the project had to go to the BZA, just included, this would be something that we would want to come to the, the Planning Board with in any case for, you know, Justin, you had a couple of others, like the location of the stormwater tank, which I think I'm just bump it over to Dan.
Program Manager for the city. So you asked three excellent questions. I think around handled the first one. The second one had to do with the stormwater tank and the protection of leak connected. We've looked at the design of the stormwater tank in conjunction with the, the building itself. And even tank actually create a, a safe haven for the trees if it was removed. The actual construction of the, it's a fuller report to be addressed to the city council in the next few, I want to say weeks. But for right now, it is our belief that those trees are separate from the stormwater tank and they are, need to come down due to the building itself.
I, I would just say that, you know, again, we were before the city council and city manager and Owen Oren said we would continue to look at, come up with a different plan or recommendation. But we're still in that phase and we were developing information to provide. So I think that process of taking another look and another reexamination. But I, I think as we said at the council meeting, it's unlikely that it will yield the difference of where we are in that review process. But, and I think Brendan expanded on the other issues. With regard to the Article 97, helping the Home Rule Petition with the state agency that oversees the Article 97. So we believe that we've been able to address their concerns and.
All right. Ted, did you have any follow-up? Or does that answer the questions you had?
No, that, I have no, and if so, have you determined how you're going to address that?
The short answer is yes, it, it, it wants solar PV. There are some constraints about that in terms of safety and, and mechanicals on the roof. But we are striving to try and meet that because we are still looking closely at it.
Yes, we're, we're hopeful that we will, we will meet the 80% coverage. It's that, you know, need to sort of stay out of their way. And further, we need to make sure that, you know, life safety is in terms of how do you, technically how do you calculate the 80% in terms of what those panels are. And we look for.
Okay. Lou and then Hugh.
Yeah, I didn't have a lot of info.
We have Chris Bradner from Traverse. And I don't know, Chris, if, if you're still on and B, if, and do you have that?
If you don't mind just unmuting yourself, you've got all the technical background for that. If you could just. Thanks, Jackie. Can you just give us a quick background on, the question was how many trees are being, the individual trees themselves? Just because we're aware that there's a different value from a 20-year-old, you know, shade tree utility work going in. And we're aware that a lot of, that most of the trees surrounding the building will need to be removed in order to accomplish that work. We will be removing approximately 42 trees. And if you add up all of the calipers based on. Great. Thanks. Jackie, I think that's great unless there's, you know, follow-up questions.
Between Vassal Lane and Concord Ave, there are about 25 adjusted trees and we're, protecting those. In fact, we didn't do that without impacting the trees along Vassal. As we refined the location of the building, we realized that we got in that area, that the excavation to have sheet piling in order to protect those. So we're really mindful of not just saying we're going to protect them, but making sure manager assessing is making a plan to.
Lou, did you have follow-up?
Yes, I have. You, and it is for relocation. You know, we pushed the tree ordinance and then we cut down 40 or so trees. And like on the renderings, we're showing 40 and 50 year old trees, but that's not what we're going to get for 40 or 50 years. I don't know how you, if you calculated the canopy loss and what you would be putting back for canopy. Also, while I'm here, is this going to be an all-electric building? Will this have geothermal? And, and one other thing, you've chosen to go with the PVs instead of the green roof. Is that correct?
There may be small areas of green roof, but largely it's, it's PV. And that's correct. Well, if you get of more, more like a terrace, so it's, it's at the third level and, and walk out to it. So we may be able to have some green roof there.
And then Owen, why don't you just take a second or, or just to talk a little bit about the relocation? Because I know you've been working with the design team on that, please.
In transplanting trees, look at the trees around the site to see if there are any good candidates associated with that effort. And we were technically indicating to us that there may be a couple of very small trees that may be candidates. But for the majority of trees in this area, just given the nature of the site that have to be removed because of the building, the option of transplanting these trees is not one that presents itself. Immediately after the conclusion of that ordinance discussion at city council, I, I will say that my planning committee, as we move through the final design associated with the landscaping around the site as well, and my.
It's usually arrived. So this building was built in the seventies, so it's roughly 60 years old. So the trees are planted with the building. So now this building won't get to have mature trees until the next time we're ready to have a new school. It, you know, I think we need to do better. I understand it's a hard situation. I was involved in moving a lot of large trees around the city. It's, I don't know if it's just cost prohibitive or if it's the welfare of the tree all the time.
So in, in response to that, I would say that in, in, in developing the design here, there was a significant, and so there was a considerable focus on that at the outset. And I think we have achieved the, the building. That is what's going to unfortunately have to happen in this instance. But again, my expectation is that when the landscape, and I expect that they will be properly maintained over time as well.
Hope you're correct. We haven't got a good track record in maintaining.
Well, the building was all electric. And the answer is yes, it is. And it does also utilize geothermal wells.
Also the stormwater.
Thank you. All right. Hugh, you had your hand up for a while.
Which were good questions and there were some pretty good answers, I thought. But we really are. And yes, there's a new ordinance that's going to make it more difficult to remove trees on private property, set the standard loss of tree canopy. If you, you set a goal of net. If you you set a goal of net zero energy, which when it was set was thought to be just about impossible. I think that's a problem. I think it's a problem that your sustainability goals diagram doesn't have a certain. Tree canopy and I don't know what. And what, you know, what the standard should be. If you say, well, should I or would you say, well, you know. I'll take, you know. Uh, I'll I'd be willing to wait five years what they can, but if you threw another million dollars at buying the trees. In a two hundred million dollar project, could you get planning board ought to advise the zoning board? To set that challenge in front of this of this team, because if you. You know, if if it's a requirement. Then it changes the dynamics, it changes. So this is a comment as well. It's like. How would you? I guess my question is, how do you get to net zero?
I'll make one comment in terms of Hugh's comment and I would say that, you know. Over the past three years, we've gone through an urban festivals that were established as a result of that. There were design goals, there were practice goals and and then there were outreach as a community. We felt that we needed to protect more trees and we wanted to encourage more planting throughout the city. And somebody else doing to increase the. And as a city, we have taken on the challenge that we are going to more than. Challenges what we do with on private property and with private development and and that continues to challenge us, but I would say in terms of. The public, the 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 resources associated with public planting in terms of both planting trees. And maintaining them over the long term in terms of urban heat island and so on over the next number of years.
I would also just add that I think as Dan mentioned and maybe an excite in itself. In terms of where the building can go to take care of the programmatic needs and trying to meet the comments that the neighbors gave in terms. Needs that we're trying to fulfill at the same time, and again, trees being one of them, but trying to reconcile all those at the same time, especially.
I want to offer a slightly different view. To what you said, Hugh, and it's not to energy building in the public realm. I entirely understand that this is an evolution of our of our profession. Given the constraints of the site and the challenges, not the least of which is some of the soils. And and so forth, that canopy that will be provided even with the the smaller caliber. Is. Quite a lot of the, you know, if it's approved, the article ninety seven open space, but also the recreational. Green is is. Going to trees, some of it is the the actual field so that the. Sort of kids that, you know, a smaller. Caliper tree doesn't immediately have, you know, maybe caliber inch per caliber inch and I not improved. Compared to what is is there now.
Uh, Hugh, did you have any other?
Uh, trees that are in the ten to thirteen inch caliber along the property line at the bus loop.
Chris may want to speak to this a little bit. Part of the challenge now, we've we've moved the building as far from. Alpine as we can, we put not having that overlap with the bus loop, you know, for for the best. Safety and experience on that and we're coming to you. Chris, can you. Provide a little bit more information or correct anything that I might have misspoke.
Um, and along the Alpine neighbors as well as exist some existing trees that are still in. Fair to good condition along Concord, unfortunately are in fair to poor condition. But, you know, to note, sure, we we're going to be examining canopy at different ages. Additionally, the species of trees. This CPP. We got great feedback on the species that we're providing. Native plant materials that will do really well in the conditions that they're located in.
It's like trees are down on the priority list. Let me also say, there's one opportunity. Huge opportunity to build a site in the parkway and convert that into green space. That would have made an enormous for sure. You would modify the school plans necessarily. At all, except in the landscaping that, you know, talk about.
Good idea, though. It would make a big difference. Let me just move on here. Tom has some questions and.
Run it by the planning board. So, uh, you know, I'm not prepared to. Run run through this and I'm very conscious of the fact that we're the hundred and first meeting too much on this site, right? And that you can't solve it in a way. That's going to come up with a with a with an answer that's worth using the footings. Are we reusing some of the building that's there? What are we doing with that? Are we just taking that embedded carbon and chucking it?
Hazard hazardous, excuse me, materials to abate, but we're still looking at the disposal of. Soil improvements that that need to be done and the like, so we're still looking at that.
Lou, did you have another question now? Okay, so let's turn then to discussion. You know, obviously, this is kind of be in concern on, you know, variety of of issues with the building. I think everybody recognizes. That it's been a very. But I'm just curious, I mean, I'll save my comments till the end in terms of what I think about all of this, but I'd like to hear from.
A contrary perspective. And that is that if and to the extent that the ZBA even cares about lots of opportunities. So you know, to to discuss your details along the way by many, many parties who have. The the process at the at this stage, it's fundamentally a a a good project. And I I I don't think one or the others of us might have a interest in, you know, so I I I would just give a. A positive recommendation to the ZBA.
This represents a vast improvement over the present conditions. As being known to provide better educational opportunities for the children of Cambridge. And. The achievement of the the, you know, the energy goals. And the zoning relief that is. Being sought is actually relatively minor. And I would say right of ways around the site. So I think we'd be. Inconscionable if we. Give our opinion that. This is a much better. Project on virtue. You've done so much. You've set the bar so high. That's why I come in. For the trees, like, okay, raise the bar for the trees at the same, you know, I'm hoping that as the. Design goes through design development. The there'll be a little more architectural detail and character that will find its way into the drawings and into the building. I kind of think that's inevitable. And. So. You know, but again, as it is, it's. So that's my 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 big picture.
Thank you. Lou, did you?
Holding our on the right track. I do, though, again, on the trees, I think we missed the mark. Being involved in moving some very low, it cost an awful lot of money, I'm sure. But it was successful. Some of this we need to really try harder on, and we're good on the electric only and so forth, but we. We missed a spot on this one with the trees. We need to do better with that. We've been fighting to this ordinance. It seems to be a shame, but other than that, I think this will be a great project and I see any way.
But in my personal experience, I have a son who went through this school and a. A not so proud graduate, I guess, in two thousand sixteen of Vassal Lane, an educational career. But he he really, really had a had a rough time and and I think it's because design matters and I think that. That very, very best to try to hold a hold a difficult student body together at that time. So I I don't know what. And we get to come up with, you know, some really brilliant ideas that I think have come out tonight. Relative to adjacent properties is Hugh about these things that the the building will evolve. But one of the earmarks of the current building are these vast expanses of blank windowless walls and I was looking at the perspective elevations from the playing fields. From the armory side of the site and I I just have to have faith. You've got a really good design team, a really great from here to make an architecture that. Doesn't share or doesn't trend towards the characteristics of the existing building now and I just. Questions are relatively minor and that we should send up a positive recommendation to. The zoning board saying we're supportive of this. Hugh's idea about expanding the boundaries is a really wonderful one. So that's where I am.
Thank you very much, Ted.
Saying that about how superior this is to what's there. And what it will do for the neighborhood, the the request to get variance from the section four point two five. Reference to the planning board for the way to be. I don't know that it would provide any further information other than what we've been doing this evening. And the BZI does not have the much, much if any design staff. And that things that come to the planning board, things situation where our staff. That we would usually refer to have been working on this for years and years already. So it's improved upon and hope that. The the architects involved will will seriously consider. Not granting a variance from section four point two five adds anything really to the to the discussion. Or to.
All right, so I think I've asked everybody. All right, so my take on it is that, yeah, I think it's a. It's a good project. I know, you know, no project, you know, that given take never gives you the perfect thing. It gives you a compromise. But and so as Hugh and others have said, the the project is very superior, came up very often. So, you know, keep that in mind. As you go forward, I think it's on the the that section on open space. What I what I would say, though, is it would have been nice this. I understand there was lots of process, but. You know, again, I knew about it because I live in the area. I'm not sure that all of the other board members, which I I would. Think it would be helpful if as you continue through design development and work on some of those things and work on the tree issue if you could come back to the board. So, okay, so then I think we need a motion. To send a positive the things that that have been said tonight, that it's a vast improvement over where. The school and the site are today. It's about trees and tree canopy and like. For the city to push as much as possible and challenge itself to replace as much that. Is can, you know, is is reasonable, given the the type of building it is and the location. I'm sorry, Hugh, I didn't get all of what you said. Did you say second or no?
On that motion, Lou Bocci?
Yes.
Ted Cohen?
Yes.
Steve Collins, member voting in favor.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your comments and we appreciate your support.
Thank you and thanks for so many.
Design and the management team for tremendous effort to really. Do this, do this job. It's really disturbing.
Tonight's business. And that is, it's a case that a board member asked to discuss. And includes an existing covered walkway at one fifty Cambridge Park Drive. CDD staff will begin providing some information on this case.
About what he wants to discuss, but since since we were sort of notified of that, we. Checked and just wanted to make sure the board was aware that this is a building that was and the board granted amendments. A few different times in twenty twelve, twenty thirteen and twenty fourteen, and that was in connection with. There was a kind of a a large set of of parking lots that were that served this and a couple of the other office buildings and. Residential development staff have met with a representative of the ownership, so we've we've had some discussions about. Just generally what they're planning to do on this, but to to review this particular proposal yet. So. So this, I think, the board can discuss it, but if there's questions for staff, we might need to look into it a little bit more and.
Okay, thank you. So Hugh, did you want to speak further as to why? This is before us.
Facing the new residential development. The other is to infill. A lot of the overhangs of the buildings and sort of adjust introduction. It seems to me. We should assert our. We should ask BZI to, you know, do our job with this building that was under our jurisdiction.
Yeah, I. Is anyone from the proponent here?
Yes, the applicant also present this evening is Tom Congeren. Of Longfellow, the project developer and Jacob Kane of Elka's and Freddie. It is correct. This is a BZI case. That seeks approval because the elevator shaft represents additional GFA. Continued interest or even jurisdiction over of the decision itself from nineteen eighty four. The building really didn't undergo much in the way of design review. It's it was then an office two district in the building. But for its location, the floodplain would have been enough as a right building. So the decision doesn't contain the drawings that are set forth in the decision. Notwithstanding that, certainly the planning board's got a role and an interest out here. I should note that about a freight elevator. Was approved at that time, so that that's kind of the context and happy to proceed with BZI. Until we have an opportunity for further design review here. Then I can't imagine that my client would find that objection both for our attempt to usurp the board's participation or over this idea.
Okay, I do think. Based on, you know, with this overall the relationship to that previous decision, so I think we probably do want to delay. But let me just hear from some of my other colleagues and see if they, all right.
Would the would the board manager with the board care to hear at all from Mr. Kane about? His elevator design choose he he was relying upon, but I'm happy to do it now or at a later date.
I think a later date might be better, only because it's late hour.
Would it be the board? Would it be the board's preference then that the applicant requested continuance at the BZI and then schedule?
This next step would be to, yes, I think that's fine. If you could ask for the continuance, Jeff. I think can work with you to send something to the to the BZI. Even though Mr. Rafferty has stated they'll they will withdraw should we staff, I apologize. So anyway.
I mean, I think that, I mean, I think that all sounds like an advisable course of action. And we would make sure it goes to the BZI for Thursday.
Okay.
And then they would they would. And then they would they would maybe help explain to them why that that continuance is being sought.
Okay. Perfect. We love that word continuance. It's nice. All right. So.
The board, you know, this is was a planning for a project, the board would like the opportunity to review it.
Perfect. All right. So Hugh has made a motion.
Lou Bocci?
Yes.
Ted Cohen?
Yes.
Steve Cohen?
Excellent. All right. Well, thank you for for bearing with us, Mr. Rafferty and your team. You know, we don't want to give you short shrift and we appreciate.
My pleasure, National League. All right.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So that concludes the business on.